If you want some house enough.
Okay.
I have copies for you.
I can understand.
Hi George.
Yes.
Nick said you first in or out of the box. He said he's. Oh, he's a rod. A lot of that fellow. Okay. Okay.
Now, let's stretch this a little bit. You've got to speak for me to bring him to understand. They are.
Strong on top.
They can't set the same level of. We'll start the meeting down next time.
Next time. No, because then it'll get me. You have to get closer to him. I think you should grab them. You should grab them. Division twenty-two champions. Not on the agenda, if that's what you're.
Right, then again.
Our loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation God.
Your God.
Inevitable, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time to uncool throat.
We don't normally get that many voices started for that. It's not our heads in traffic. Finally, we thank you for this whole week and I thank you for the joy that's in Hubbleville for all the girls and their coaches and all the support team. Honored them tonight and morning and God, the Lord. Bless us, we've been thinking tonight on the council and let us do the work that we do for our citizens in Jesus' name.
City Park, are you reading very closely on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, June nineteenth.
I need your working mic, by the way. Not me, check it. Not.
Here we go. Thank you. Executive session announcements, attorney Warren, you have any?
There are no questions.
Thank you. This is a time for general public comments. The public may address the city council on any item that does not appear on the agenda for the need of the other.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, would you like to do the recognition?
And we do want to make a special recognition tonight. It's not on our agenda, but we're going to do it. We have a certificate of recognition on this twenty-third day of June, twenty-twenty-five. This following award is given to the Hubbleville Little League Girls Eight to Ten Softball Team. I think that's.
Where are they?
This certificate is given to the Hubbleville Little League Girls Eight to Ten Softball Team for their achievement as the twenty-twenty-five California Eight to Ten Year Old District Twenty-two Champions. Woo-hoo! So, we're going to do this in a set of photos. First, we're going to ask the council to join me down here with someone from leadership and we'll take a photo of the full council and someone to take this out of my hands. Take a photo of that, then we're going to invite all the young folks to come up with those supporters and take another photo right here with the seal behind us. Can we do that?
Can I ask something to everything now?
You can come up here and see the event like it. I'm not sure it's going to work.
Well, I'll just talk really quick, though. These girls are not only the first District Twenty-two Eight to Ten, they are the first ever softball team to make it from District Twenty-two.
Excellent.
And the girls are just the. John, is that working? Is that working? Murray's like, I thought I got to sit for the next two hours. I'm done with the up and down. What basketball players do I need to recruit?
At least it's a different season than the basketball. Hey, girl, we're great.
Gling, gling!
Keep smiling, one, two, three, keep smiling. Get the log in there. We are missing Eden Milk Picker and Adam from Light. So, this week we found the guys who are delighted to be our first game. They are guaranteed to be delighted to relax after the rally.
Yeah, I do.
So, good luck to them. I'm super proud of you guys, the whole board is proud of you. Thank you, Hubbleville, for the support. That's what it's important to, to go out and support everyone. Thank you.
You don't have to practice for wrestling, we're easy.
We're real sandy. Yeah, go practice, because you have another game coming up. You can play, that's where it works.
Okay. Thank you, nice to get it. Yes, yes, we will.
We'll genuinely suggest a nice ball.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, guys again. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Before I leave, I wanted to thank the council, the state for helping so much this year, especially with the still with the volunteers that we've had too. You guys have made this year a lot easier on us, trying to get this all programmed over in the valley. We are trying to move the girls with the initiative to grow our teams, and we've had four teams, and that's quite a bit for Brawley. We had, oh, I'm sorry, I told them. I think Brawley was the other one that really was in it with us. So, I just wanted to thank you guys so much for your support. We really appreciate it.
How are the boys doing? How's Little League and baseball going?
Baseball is going very well. The juniors, I'm sorry, the juniors made it to the championship. Unfortunately, they lost at the last game. But it was great for these boys, having their last year making it to that championship. Ten you win a couple games in, and that problem starts tomorrow. So, we're not done yet.
Are you hosting any, or is it all?
We've actually been hosting several different games. Our next game will be on the twenty-fifth here. Thank you, guys, appreciate you guys staying.
Thank you, Julie.
Now, we'll move on to some public comments. The public may address the city council on any item that does not appear on the agenda for this meeting within the purview of the city council. If anyone wanted to address the council on the meeting. Did you run under four high gates?
I did, I don't know if this is working or not.
Yes.
We kind of know who you are from maybe the public out there.
Okay. Laura gets Vice Chairman and Frayor Valley Healthcare District. And here with what I think is really good news. Most of you, if you've been following it, you know that we did approve the JPA with UCSC for the IDHD. It's in two phases. The first phase is advisory to help us with the whole getting things together. I mean, there's a lot of work, the works are. Well, the works done. It's been a lot of work, I'm excited. The work's just going to continue because now we're going to grow entities together. The other exciting thing is if you have time, we'll be meeting this Thursday at six o'clock in the central city council chambers. We have every expectation and we're really hoping that our central city council, if they're meeting tomorrow, is going to approve the ATA. And if that's all acceptable to them, then we're really hoping that our boards will approve the ATA with our central city, our central regional medical center, and we can get into escrow, so hopefully we can officially bring our central regional into the fall of the unified district. So, this is the exciting part. It's been kind of nail-biting to get there. There's, I'm sure going to be other things coming up as discovery happens and all of that, but I think it is exciting for the people of the valley that we're getting to the point where we can pull it all together and start seeing the best things. Because that also means that you'll be here in the coming probably in the not-too-distant future, but we do want to try and get a positive initiative for funding mechanism on the valley in June of twenty-twenty-six. That's what our goal is. And we have to get something by December, or not December, November, twenty-sixth, because that will be the second. That's our deadline based on the provisions that we've got. So, there's probably going to be a little bit of heartburn as well, but I think it's going to be awesome and it's going to be a lot of good. Unless you have any questions. You can always go to our website, you can look at past meetings, you can have them and watch what you do. I think it's on Teams now, so you can't be there in person, so.
I think it was announced on the radio.
Yeah, and the end too, as far as I think, how the presentation has discovered the topic. It's on both of our agendas, as far as. Something that's not posted yet, but. Because obviously we posted our agenda.
It's been a lot of work. I guess it's successful.
We appreciate you, Laura.
Anybody else for public comments? Seeing that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are to be approved without comment should any council member or a member of the public wish to discuss any item, we may request that that item be removed from the consent agenda based on the new business agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, June ninth, forty-four five, and item B, current demands number four eight one six zero to number four eight two three seven. It's a pleasure of council concerning tonight's consent agenda.
Almost approved.
Your motion of the second, go call.
John Munger.
Yes.
Mike Pacheco. Murray Anderson.
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez.
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell.
Good to have everybody back. All right, so we're going to talk to officers, commissioners, committees, and community committees. We'll start with our city park, events.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, I have an IVRMA TAC meeting. I recently submitted some reports for our SB thirteen eighty-three grant. So, I try to keep up with that stuff through going to those IVRMA meetings. We had a new TikTok posted today with our really awesome mayor.
Really, you posted it?
Yes, I did.
Got hands, didn't it?
Yeah. Got a little touchy.
Yes. So, yeah, that one already, you already have fans in the comments. So, yeah, and then just, I've been.
Laura laughed.
That's good. And, you know, I've just been still active with our text my gov a little about a week or two back. I put one out for to remind them of the street sweeping, you know, that issue. It came up last week, there was a closure on Brentwood, so. I'm still keeping up with that. If there's ever anything that comes up, you know, it's really easy to put those on there. And just since it came up also, there is also a separate number. So, we have the nine one eight nine six number that you could text to get the notifications. And then there's the other number, three five six nine 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 five, to report something in. Okay, so if you're at the park, you see equipment's broken or something like that, you can text, yeah.
I'm sure you have, but can you like repost it?
Yeah. So, yeah, just remind everyone of that one because that feature, we haven't, I mean, it has been used, it's just not as often we see it used. So, just putting that out there, and that's it for me.
Hey, you guys, Nick, I know you sit close to Haley every day. How's our pool sponsorship daily, weekly going?
We got all of June sponsored, and then I think she's like at two or three weeks in July. So, you know, as the summer goes on, everyone sees the posts. I think we just get more and more, so hopefully we get the whole summer sponsored like last year.
City manager, you call.
Just real quick, I'll recap some things I've done, and then later I'll talk a little more about my report, but just to highlight, we went to the Ivy Economic Summit last week, including a reception the night before at Cambria Hotel, the Summit IBC. Mayor joined us on one day, and I went to both days. Last year was a lot of Lithium Valley stuff, ad nauseam. This year, they talked about it, but they had some other things to talk about as well. So, it's always good to kind of get in there and kind of hear the things that are going on and everything. Then, a couple days later, the day after that was over, we did the project scoring for all of the ICTC projects. Chandler and I did all that stuff. And she can talk to you a little bit more about how those scores turned out with the group. And then Mike Pacheco and I met with a local business owner about past water bills and things like that. The history of his family in Duro Valley, break-ins in his business. It's loads of fun.
They did go well.
Anyway, that's all of my highlights there.
I know you covered for me.
I did, I covered the airport nondiscussion for the mayor's bulletin last week. There are a few items on the agenda, the two in the bin continued. One item, which is part of the city hope, was. Public hearing on whether or not a post cell tower site out on Underwood, I think Underwood, all of them.
Definitely.
Complied with the current iteration of their port plan, compelling compatibility plan. Much in determine that it did, so it's going to go through the rest of the procedures. Environmental review, and that's going to get through the county planning at seven forty-five for approval or not of a variance in commercial.
Monsieur, I appreciate you covering.
That was a six-hour drive.
Well, I thought it was going to be a good meeting when two of them were continuing, but then there was some opposition from local residents with some doubts.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Thanks, so I, I know. Did we talk about that last thing?
Who told me?
Mr. Goodsell called me Vanessa.
Put her back a few years, she was single.
Yeah. Yes, so I apologize for being absent two weeks ago. As you guys know, my mom's been in and out of the hospital. Today, she's doing good, hopefully that we keep that momentum going. She's able to stay home. But I do appreciate all of the support and prayers from everyone, not just on the council, but in the community. I really appreciate that. I did get to go by our city pool this weekend, which was really nice. One of the nearest kids, our oldest, is lifeguarding, this is his first job. Working there at the pool, so that's really exciting, and we quite enjoyed our time there on Saturday. Also, I took the kids over to the wetlands for walks, so. I've just been staying busy with the pros at home and happy to be back.
Also, Murray Anderson.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor, than kind of laying low. Just, you know, Nick mentioned the meeting with one of our residents, so. That was it in the past two weeks.
Watson, Johnny?
I don't have any more to report, thank you.
Okay, George.
Nope. Why?
Chief?
Private report. Yes, and first of all, we'll come back to my report. We switched our vendors for it, and it's really easy for the guys to input, because all drop points in there. But it's really hard for me to get into, get all the stuff that needs to be. But I'll have a pretty good next month, I'll be adding a little more information on our, I'd like to be you guys which I can, and next next month, I'll be talking to you. Other than that, a couple things, fall of July next week, we are ready to go. It's a little wire moving, that's why. So, I have cruise ready for next week and for the fall of July. We are sending one engine out at night with Altec, a system, and I will be far away in the valley, so we provide a mini access. We are planning to do snow cones at the pool for the July, forty-five minutes, so. Don't put it on Tuesday or get it probably not. Yes, this Thursday is the Par Academy graduation at IBC. I have two of my staff present, so I'm very proud of them, and we'll be out there. Farble chance, we're going to inspect them on twenty-eighth, I'm per se, to the thirtieth. I apologize for that. Um, chief and I, well, the real chief and I, we were invited to go up to burn camp. Uh, this year should be up by the mall, and I believe they have 14 kids in the valley that have been burnt. Uh, last couple of weeks, went out and, uh, did the EOC training here with all the asset management. And, uh, today I sent you all a test, uh, there's a fire here. And you got pretty, uh, pretty tense, and I apologize for being, uh, small at smoke. But, uh, got a control real quick, and it spread to the field, which was spreading towards the third time. So they, they got me. Probably want to go to you. Uh, when I arrived at, uh, in Heber, uh, my staff had got a call, um, and I can't give them a picture, but basically threw somebody out. Um, got hit, um, crossing the road on this street.
Sounds of pet, pet in Mrs. Car?
Uh-huh.
I saw it, but I didn't.
Yeah. So that was one of your staff members?
No, no, no.
Oh.
No, no, they were here still. I don't like it. They happen to take off until I have staff coming in to cover the city. So they're still here to come get copper heber. Uh, and it was a vehicle versus pedestrian. They threw them out. It's not lifeguarding, but it's severe injury.
Do you know where on that exactly?
Right by our nuts.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Fucking food.
Fucking food.
Word is that the, uh, travelers distracted me looking at some shop and came back and tried to, uh, pedestrians. Well, uh, we, we brought it to our prayers, and it's not lifeguarding, but it's a little pretty severe. And on that, I apologize for the report, but I might be able to, uh, help you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, I forgot if you don't mind, I forgot to mention, um, I did attend, uh, the library. I wanted to thank the chief, um, Martinez and Silva. They are gonna be doing, so they did, the sheriff's department came by the library and did reading for, um, the reading program. Is the library for the youth, and then I know Chief Silva is gonna be out there as well, so thank you for that, for that mention.
Senator, I saw you down there Saturday. What did you say, Saturday? Who's in the white suit?
No, she's in a T-shirt.
I don't know what T-shirt is. It's still not a T-shirt.
I don't know what's white suit.
Um, Gilbert, Gilbert says that he.
He's out of town.
He's in Mexico, like, far, like, plain, like, the, I don't know where he went, but it's not a T-shirt.
It must have been a car that looked like his.
Was it in the city mall personnel slide? A woman?
What's it mean? Was it Gilbert?
I wasn't killed.
It's been on me, but it's.
Well, I wasn't here working on a Saturday, but that's, you won't catch me doing that. I mean, I'm kidding. I will, anyway. Uh, but to report, I had the ICTC swearing meeting, um, last week, like Nick mentioned. Hopeville pretty much came up kind of in the middle, um, kind of how I guess we typically view from what Nick has said. Um, and unfortunately with this round, it's much different from one of your previous rounds. Then it will submit a recommendation as a county, and then it goes to SCAG, and then the region is getting now kind of submit a score, and it could be something completely different from what we did. And then what we recommended won't get funded and other things will get funded, but that's gonna be determined by them, um, about a month. But from our recommendations down here, the county basically submitted everybody's as either highly recommended or recommended. It looks like there's enough money to basically fund everything except there's this large imperial project, um, for 86. It's like $6 million, and that might be the one that doesn't get funded. But for, for Hopeville, it looks like we are gonna, we could get funded as SCAG kind of follows our, um, suit. Um, the only thing was we did commit some like $50,000 more for a match on, um, which will send a petition, um, for a level match for a lot of the projects, but it was like, in order to get all three phases done, we just kind of committed to a little bit more and make sure there's enough funds in the tax base for that. Um, but it looks, it looks good. And then where it look, the next phase is it goes to, to the county, and then it goes, um, to SCAG, so I don't know how to count this. Um, and then next week I have the normal ICTC tack meeting, um, that'll be coming on Thursday. But isn't that, nothing else to add for part?
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've got a report from the, my attendance to the Long Beach area, for, uh, the Maya Hotel, for the 29th, so. For the executive administrative committee with SCAG. And SCAG does like this because Comey likes his presidential role models. So we had a busy agenda. It was only half a day, the second day. Day one agenda, we just did a SCAG 101 with an overview of the organization from Derek Chitting, who's the chief operator, the office. By the way, his house currently been on, uh, in the fires.
I can hear that.
Uh, he gave, uh, an outline of the six primary goals and responsibilities of the program. He said, regional transportation plan, sustainable community strategy, capital transportation improvement program, regional housing needs assessment, regional data and information center, and forum for issues of regional system. The funding streams have come from some of those, are what, you know, SCAG, ICTC, all of the transportation commissions, uh, gained from that. That regional data and information center, I was sharing with the city manager recently, it is quite, uh, a gem of information. The overlays that they can put on various maps of what kind of data they generated and have available for us to help us in the decision process. We gotta take better advantage of that, but it's, uh, it's just amazing. Comey and Sarah Jepsen, uh, the chief planning officer, they offered a set of policy briefs. And the next item, and then the legal council get the overview to offer the explanation of some policy, uh, manual. They do, got a recap from the chairwoman Cindy Allen, who was our host. She's the representative from Long Beach. Her life story is amazing, but just amazing. She was a police woman, uh, early on. She grew up in the Long Beach area. She got almost beat to death on the job. And then, you know, the old police work anymore, went into marketing and excelled big time. And, uh, a lot of the various things that are around that day there, she had something to do with either the names of them or the marketing that supported them, uh, pretty amazing life story that she shared for us. Uh, Comey also presented the regional council policy committee outlooks for the whole year ahead. That's what they usually do at that meeting, as I, they do there, I learned. You know, they kind of outline, this is what we're gonna strategize for all the committees and the direction of the whole council. And the public affairs officer, Javier Carte, she viewed the significant events that, uh, that taking place. Like, we just went to the general center, and she reviewed how, how they, kind of evaluated it. They wrapped it up, and they went home by noon, uh, as I said before, took six hours. We, we left Hopeville, said three and a half hours. But we started hitting traffic, and suddenly it's adding 30, 40, an hour at a time, like, what? We were going backwards, it felt like, but we know we were moving at that. It was a great experience, you know? And I'm very much surprised Nick to know that group. There are some really bright people on that group, and they have discussions, sometimes a quiet, uh, spirit. It became part of it all. Okay, we'll move on now to unfinished business. We have, uh, one question about unfinished business, is the agreement with SciLogic to analyze and design energy efficiency strategies and solutions for city buildings and. Brought this back from our last meeting, well, to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, we talked about this a little bit, but procedurally, uh, although this, uh, didn't, didn't receive the votes to go forward last time. It was requested by two council members, but we gave it back, so, um, so bringing that back with, uh, um, I asked, uh, Josh Eber with SciLogic, who's been kind of the point man for this, to, um, come, come and give us a little more information. I, I was not prepared to answer a lot of the questions I think some of you had, so, uh, so he's here to do that today. And, uh, Yvette, can you pull up that spreadsheet that I?
I think so.
Yes. Can we get that, do like, say, a print or whatever, and then we'll see if it comes up, like.
You didn't want the PDF to use, or is that different?
It's different.
Okay.
Okay, and is there any, get rid of that thing on the side, then? And?
No.
I put this together so it's a little bigger. It's, it's your numbers, it's just, it's just bigger and easier to read. Okay, then shrink it a little bit. There we go.
Josh, the board is yours.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager staff, and the community of Hopeville. It's also good to hear mom's doing a lot better tonight. Uh, I appreciate allowing me to come back to kind of dive a little deeper into this, and really let's get the questions out of the way. I know we've kind of come in more with a vision, but really wanted to lay down the preliminary pro forma to see, does this make sense to move forward? Um, so before I kind of get started in this pro forma, I, I want to bring it back to why we are here. Why have I been talking to the city of Hopeville? And what's in it for the city of Hopeville to do this type of program? The number one thing is, it's Sacramento handing down these unfunded mandates. Some have earlier dates than others. So like SB 100, that's renewable generation for local governments. We need to see that by 2035. With car mandates, even though federal administration, uh, might be saying one way, I think we all agree that our state will double down on the opposite. We haven't seen any changes with car mandates. And if you're aware, moving forward in 2026, 100% of all your vehicles that you have to procure have to be electric vehicles. There's also lighting. Lighting has been, uh, a new one that started in 2025 for the procurement of fluorescent light bulbs. So with what we've kind of looked at, the scope and scale, those three areas are being achieved by this program. There are some other mandates, like Cal Green Code, when we're looking at potential, or when you're looking at potentially a new public safety building or any parking lot remediation, that's when we'll start looking at EV charging stations for the public. But as of right now, also being one of the last cities, uh, southeast, uh, in, in the state. Uh, I talked with, uh, city manager Wells, um, and he sits, uh, on the city manager ICTC, uh, board. So we are kind of looking at another program there when it comes to public infrastructure. But bringing it back, the model that we're showing today based off this pro forma achieves, um, SB 100 on the renewable side. It's gonna be our solar, and also I'm going blank, oh, is it kind of 24? No, yeah, kind of 24 too, but I'm going blank on what the fluorescent light bulb band is. I can't think of it, but even that's achieving there. Um, because some of the lighting, there is a little bit outdoor, but a lot of it is actually going to complete the sports lighting here at the park. We know one of the fields have been done, but we'd love to come in and do the remaining. Also, there's interior lighting in some areas as well. So again, kind of wanted to bring it back, while we're just up here looking to identify opportunities. These are state mandates, uh, they're unfunded mandates, and really we're bringing a strategic program that we're working with other diverse agencies across the state on, hey, how do we pay for this? Well, let's look at our program this way. Uh, any?
Just, I was just gonna say something real quick. Uh, Josh, I think I started with a rounded number, so this will, this will be off by two or three dollars at the end, but it's, it's your, it's your exact spreadsheet, just, just.
Perfect.
Sorry. Don't let anything fool you here.
No worries. Um, and before I start, uh, any questions? And, and I apologize, I forgot this is the second meeting I've had this. Behind me, I also brought my team, who's been working, collaborating with staff for the past few months. Jonathan Brown, uh, from development, and also even got the, our lead engineer. So we're here to dive into this technical, talk about numbers, um, so let's get into it. Uh, we're looking at a, uh, and again, this proma, uh, this pro forma is preliminary. Um, we believe we can type these numbers in the next 60 to 90 days and be back with, with a, a real program ready to build. But we're looking at a preliminary cost of just about $2.4 million. Uh, this pro forma, we have based it off of utility escalation of 3.5%. We, since the scale or the scope and scale is renewables, we've also put a, a degradation there for the solar itself. We've been talking with our finance partners on how do we make this domestic traffic? And we've come up with a program where it would take a city contribution of $0 to get going on this. We've kind of outlined on what that least transaction could be, and the capitalized interest during the construction period would be. Where you would be seeing this fly, it's just bothering me, but I'm gonna talk to it. Uh, we are seeing a total amount financed, uh, of about $2.7 million. Uh, there's a few things I want to touch on. Uh, one, the Inflation Reduction Act, uh, that has a sunset of 2027?
Uh, so it's, it's ready, uh, the bill, the Senate has come back, that they're version of the, uh, big beautiful bill. Um, so it's still up in the air right now. It's either 60 days or through the end of the year that you have to start construction.
And starting construction could mean?
Uh, procurement of equipment.
So we could easily keep moving this along and, and safe harbor some of those technologies to be able to get the city back incentive they should get from the treasury itself. So what are you looking at? Um, did you do it in columns? Yeah, okay. So, uh, column one's just clear. It's gonna be for the next 30 years. Uh, column two through eight are gonna be your total program savings. So column two is gonna be utility cost avoidance from the solar. You're looking at a little over $6 million in savings and generation that that solar would bring. The third column is utility cost avoidance on the lighting side. Again, that's interior and exterior lighting, but primarily, most of it's gonna be your sports lighting at the park. And we're looking at a rough savings for the next, uh, 10 years, 15 years of, uh, $65,000. Uh, the utility cost avoidance on mechanical, um, as we've scaled through a few of these buildings, you have a few HVAC systems that are beyond the end of useful life. Uh, really with HVAC, there's not too much of a savings, so when you look holistically at the program by bringing something in that's got greater savings and generation, it kind of helps offset some of those, um, longer payback measures without having to dip and do an emergency plan or even plan around and CIP on that. Column five, um, additional incentives, grants, and rebates, which we like to, uh, to be determined right now. They come and go. When I could say, today might be gone by Friday. So my goal is hopefully in the next 60 days, when we come back, uh, with what that, you know, final program's gonna look like, we'll also have more grants and incentives from the Fed, state, and local that we would like to bring to the table. But we are factoring in this model right now, which is in the top right corner, um, i- i- and it's the acronym of IRA, but that's the Inflation Reduction Act, which you're seeing just under a million dollars that will be coming back to the city from there.
Josh, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Are you certain that the administration, the current administration is not gonna afford the funds?
Um, uh, why don't you kind of speak more on the IRA, cause it's two sides of the aisle that.
Yeah, cause I worked for a utility company too, and, and we've seen that where they have pulled, uh, some of the funding away.
Well, that's what he's saying. It could be 60 days or, or, or six months, but they're gonna go, right?
They are gonna go. Uh, so the Congress, the House of Representatives, uh, put forward their bill that adjusts the Inflation Reduction Act. But at the 60 day sunset, the Senate came back and had their version of the bill, which had through the end of the year, uh, to safe harbor. And so we're watching it to see how it's gonna finally end up. But I think it's in a lean towards where the Senate is going. Uh, because it's not only cities that are starting today on the project, it's cities that approved a project, uh, two months ago that's at risk. They've already committed to a project. Uh, and so they're, what I suspect is they'll give it to them in the year, uh, this sunset of this program. And we're in good, good position, uh, you know, to develop the program, bring back, uh, you know, a solid, well thought out, well organized program for the city to consider, and I'll, we'll keep the safe harbor in those spots.
Thank you. Great question. Um, column six, we're looking at capital costs avoidance and maintenance savings. That's primarily through your lighting, uh, cost of labor to do it, the material itself. But then number seven, I like pointing this one out. Uh, when you have solar being brought in, that's a new technology for the city. You currently do not have a budget to maintain it. You don't have a budget to clean it. You have a budget to operate it. So we have come up with our own model, um, and as you can see, it's, uh, roughly about $400,000. But I wanted to point out, you'll see in year 10, year 15, year 20, those are. But I wanted to point out, you'll see in year 10, year 15, year 20, those are higher amounts. It's not just panel cleaning. We want to know that that system is operating through the end of useful, for the lifecycle costs that it should have. So what we're factoring is, we know inverters are gonna die, but the models are still gonna work. We know there's going to be some electrical wiring that's gonna get faulty. We want to bring that up. So we are factoring in there will be inverter changes. Not saying it could be in year one, but at least you know you have a program that's modeling what it's going to cost to service that. That's not included in our program. We're not here to wash channels after, even though we could, that's our own, own team, and that's a yearly contract. But we at least wanted you to know that if you were to take on these assets, that in your budget, you still saw $400,000 through the useful life of the technology, it's still being maintained. It's still being kept up. So I think we all agree, we've seen some solar installed, and the companies have walked away. How are those systems performing? I think most of them, we're going back and fixing and adding additional solar into that agency. So just wanted you to see that, you know, we are taking care of some of this new technology of at least putting a number to what that maintenance and that O&amp;M would be for them. Which then leads us at a total program savings of just roughly about $6 million. So we brought our financial partner in, kind of number one, to run some numbers. Our financial partner works with government agencies on taxes, emptyness, leases. This program, you own your assets, and it's going to be a low interest rate if the city decide to take forward. So we had them blend in their payments, which we wanted to make sure that each year over year, you're going to be green. Now, we've ran this 3.5 number just recently. We were going to come in with a 5% utility escalation, but after speaking with staff, we changed it. Once this goes back into our finance partner's hands and they can blend it, those four years or five years that you're seeing in the red, you will see those come back and green. Again, we're not just coming into the city stating, this is what you should build, this is what Sacramento's telling you. We're trying to understand what's the compliance from Sacramento? What's the capacity that can even be done here, especially with the utility? And what's the capital to get there? And we are being compliant with government code 4217, which would be also the contract vehicle to do the implementation of the product. And if anyone has, here?
No, we were just talking, it's gone from that, but they're seeing it on this screen.
Oh, okay, let me go look. So after the lease payments included your total program savings, you're seeing a few of savings of roughly $2.9 million over 30 years. The debt services will only be for 20 years. So really, the program is being paid back at 100% on that 20-year mark, and then everything from year 20 to year 30 is just extra savings back to the city. Do I have any questions so far?
I think you touched on the O&amp;M too, that you've been asking about. That's factored in.
At least it's factored on industry standards. Goals definitely work local, and I bet you there's a few great companies actually others are doing for the school sides on our projects. But when it comes to the O&amp;M side after the project's built, you know, you're really looking at a couple washes a year, but it's then a company coming at you at least yearly to make sure all the electrical components are up to par. Not too far away, so I know what our weather is in this area, how fast.
Well, it's true what you said, there's solar companies that have come in and installed these, and I've never seen one watch the end.
So Josh, I'm just gonna read something from what's on our agenda here. You're requesting the next step of a more substantive, evaluation of our needs, right? It will either prove out these numbers or some other numbers, right? Are you confident that the numbers will be at least like a million and a half? Because it's probably the bottom, the seller for us, you know, for moving in on this, because otherwise I don't think we can justify it.
No, great question. I'm confident in my team that what we created, we're going to be plus or minus by 10% when we come back with those final numbers. What I don't think any of us are confident are, which doesn't mean we should halt, let's keep moving us forward. And if it comes to that situation, it does, would be the IRA. Because I know that this model would heavily benefit if the IRA was there. And if I came back and said the IRA was gone, we need to find a million dollars, we're in a different conversation. But we do believe, and I do trust my team, that we're right in that ballpark, and we believe we're still ahead of the treasury on getting at least the city of Hopeville grandfathered into that.
Can we even watch like down to the top?
Yes, so my public hearing right now, we have an ad hoc committee. We're staffed today, we're staffed Thursday, and on Monday, we have our ad hoc committee meeting. And then on July 15th, as long as the ad hoc sets it, we will be seeing a public hearing for our program. That one's a little more unique. Their challenge was advanced mobility and electrical infrastructure. Same challenges, understanding compliance from Sacramento, what's the capacity here with IID? And what's the capital going to be there? Majority of that program is focused on county assets and county fleet. There are a few sites that they already have existing renewables that we're bringing more renewables to help out that site. And then there were certain sites where they didn't do renewables five, 10 years ago, and now it made sense. Keep in mind, my ID's been pretty good for the last two decades, they got you in the last two years. And is that going to be a pattern we're seeing forward? Keegan, I don't know if you want to come up and kind of talk about the IID rate changes back in February? And when we should see those for commercial government buildings?
Yeah, so assuming everyone's heard the news, in February of this past year, there was a substantial increase in IID rate hikes. That pertains to the base energy rate specifically. And IID said, well, because we're increasing this base energy rate, at the same time, we're going to decrease what they call the energy cost adjustment, so it would almost net out. It wouldn't be necessarily net out, but almost to kind of make up for some of the other increase. That is what they've released as of February. We don't expect that to necessarily be, you know, an indefinite thing. They can come back, you know, in a year or two's time from now and say, we're re-instituting that energy cost adjustment such that there would be less of a negating of the base energy rate increase at the same place. So like Josh had mentioned, IID territory in general for the past couple of decades has benefited from historically low rates. And they are going to continue to be low in comparison to other parts of California. But I think I anticipate that the rate that they'll increase will be more than that of the past couple of decades, even though they'll be relatively cheaper than the rest of California, like San Diego, Los Angeles territory, for example.
Any other questions or concerns with council members? Thank you, Josh.
Much appreciated. Thank you for allowing me to be here again.
We'll push this up here for consideration of the motion.
Just curious, because they asked this last time, what other, what other entities in Imperial County are you guys working with right now? I know school districts, a couple of school districts and.
Yeah, a handful of schools, actually, probably a couple handfuls at this point, school districts in Imperial Valley. We've completed construction or near complete construction with Heber Vows and the Cape. We're in progress with various developments at West Moreland and Imperial USD, as well as in some preliminary negotiations with other districts. I may have missed one or two, but I think that's, that's most of it.
And outside of education, county's got public hearing coming forward. City of El Centro is kind of right where you're at, but we're a little paused right now because of the hospital and how those firms are going to come in. And then of course, you know, we're just starting conversations with pretty much the others a little more north on the city side. Outside of that, on local, we kind of walked our programs through with ICTC. Kind of got a good blessing from David on what we're doing for the county. And we've also walked it through with SCAG as well. So those entities that we've brought up are well aware of the programs and kind of the work site logic that is working on in the valley. And we've been big, I don't want to say sponsors, but members with SCAG and being involved with ICTC. And outside of those, I see your legislators all the time. It's not up to me to kind of tell them what we got going on, but would love to jointly have some of these conversations. I know Assemblyman Gonzalez is really excited about this. I've seen even Senator Padilla, and I've been having conversations for a couple of years now. So he understands what we're trying to do in this valley and takes you guys to kind of say, hey, we want a part of that, how do you get money? I'm going blank on that Senate, where the schools get the money. But the Assemblyman who drove that, a couple of years ago, there was Assembly Bill 617 or something like that.
Yeah, 867.
Remember? And we worked with Assemblyman here and Evolution Control District.
Arda Garcia?
It was Garcia, yeah. And, and there was like six or seven million, and I think we helped out 80% of the school districts with that funding. So we're always running unique ways. What I have today is right here. And, you know, being in government, our state's fine. So it's, it's really putting a concern for my gap on and understanding what's available out there and how the city of Hopeville can take advantage, because maybe they did do it today, but in 10 years, the state's gonna say, now you do it. What kind of strategic program might be able to help you with that?
Yeah, it's a carrot stick thing, you know? They offer you carrots, not mandatory today, but yeah.
Today, they're giving you raisins for some for your carrots. You gotta eat them dry 10 years from now.
Here, Goodson, I have a follow-up question. You mentioned a million and a half metric a few minutes ago. Is that in reference to?
You can't get these numbers if they drop. How far will it drop?
Yeah, and so when you say a million and a half, is that in reference to, I'm not sure if you can see on the TV, but that net savings call? I just wanted to understand that. And based on the, the scope and scale that we have earmarked thus far, the deviation from where we have now of that net savings, about $3 million, to drop to a million and a half, I mean, that's very, very, very little on. So we're, we're confident, and these values, and even more confident that we can get a net savings.
Well, we do know that if you go through all this process, and whatever the number comes out to be, if you can do more, it's good. If, if it's much less substantial than you were promising, we're going to back up on it, you know? And then you're going to ask for your $32,000 for doing the work. So we just wanted some assurances that there's some protection that it won't go too far back.
And in that partner agreement, it does state, it has to meet the city's economic criteria. So if that's your number.
We're kind of here on criteria when I say that.
We've got to be above it. I do want Jonathan, can you kind of talk about guarantee, especially on your local side?
I've been informing our criteria just a couple of those.
But we're not just building solar and crossing our fingers. There is going to be some clauses in the implementation agreement, you know, pretty much guarantees. We let Jonathan talk about it, but, you know, we do reimburse shortfalls if we're wrong. But we will be able to come out and fix it first too.
Yeah, I think that's essentially it, is we offer a 90% production guarantee on the solar. So we're monitoring the solar almost real time. There's meters, we have data connections. So we see how the solar's being produced, how the power's being produced day after day. We're able to, you know, understand that if there's an issue, we'll roll a truck, we'll have some maintenance, we'll understand, we'll replace an inverter or call a warranty issue. And so the production, that savings will, will materialize or will make the city whole.
And you will have access to all that data too, to keep us on our toes, so.
The column that's empty here, additional incentives, grants and rebates, for the life of the program, if you section those out?
Yeah, always.
So do you want to ask my question here? On line two, there was a number that was initially on the agenda that's not on there now. So if you go to the packet that was sent out?
Okay.
Via email? But it's not on there. So line two in the packet on the same spreadsheet?
Oh, they, they gave me a different spreadsheet, and I, and I assumed that was, that was the preliminary, but they gave me a different, they gave me a different spreadsheet. That's what you're talking about?
Is that the entire book here or?
No, originally I do look, I think that shows a 5% utility escalation. And after talking with staff, we said we were going to come in tonight with a 3.5. So those are the only changes related to the agenda from what we showed up with today.
But that's under the incentive grants and rebates?
Oh, I see what you're talking about. The 927 for the?
Oh, the IRA.
Yeah, because you took the.
We, so we factored the Inflation Reduction Act into the whole law. We just didn't have it in its own column. It's up in the top right corner, and it does factor into the.
Yeah, so if you see. Right, right.
All right, well, let's call for a question. What's a question of the council concerning this? City manager recommends the cooking off, the project in the form. If there are questions to be answered, we'll be in motion if you shall choose.
I'll make a motion before.
I would second the motion, as I did last time. Go, Paul, please.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodson?
Yes.
We're gonna get to work now.
Get out of here, go start working.
See you all soon.
Thank you.
Good, everybody?
Hey, thanks for coming on today.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. All right, item three, if you use this discussion related action to adopt Resolution 2519 establishing an appropriations in the next year, 2025, 26 fiscal year, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for most of you to review, but for our new, new council member, I'll explain the GAN limit is basically a calculation that's iterative year to year, and it, it has the maximum amount of taxes that you can levy on citizens of the city. And so it doesn't allow you to, unless you grow immensely, you can't, you can't raise your taxes. We don't have a lot of local taxes, but you can't raise those significantly from year to year. So it establishes a limit. And if you see the calculation, our, our limit for last year was 5.28 million. Using both population change and the CPI change, there's a calculation that develops after that. And so our, our GAN limit for this year is 6.08 million. The, the taxes that we are levying, which include property tax, motor vehicle tax, franchise tax, sales tax, add up to 2.27 million. So we're 3.8 million under our GAN limit. So we can, we can double our taxing. Somebody asked about a local sales tax, we could put on a 50% sales tax and probably get away with it according to the GAN limit, but not that we need to do that. But, so that's basically, this has to be calculated and has to be passed by the council every year, so that's what we have.
All right, so. We need a motion on this resolution 2519. Do you have any questions?
I'll approve the resolution 2519.
Motion for three days, second. Awesome. Go, Paul.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodson?
Yes.
Item three, the discussion related action to adopt Resolution 2520, the binding the incentives for the 25, 26 fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, there it is, I couldn't find my sheet there. So as you are aware, we have been working furiously for the last month or so since we finished the audit, basically. Chandler and I have been working on the budget for this year. You, you might recall that when we first presented the general fund budget, we projected over $100,000 loss for the year. We have since kind of fine tuned some of the numbers. Um, we have since kind of fine tuned some of the numbers, uh, got more data to work with. Uh, that was projections through April, we had projections through May, um, and then did dive into some of the, the numbers a little more closely. And we're projecting a fifty seven thousand dollar loss, so we basically were able to cut that in half. Um, I guess as a, you know, preliminary deal, um, we do have plenty of, uh, reserve funds. Uh, if we did end up in, in the red, um, I will say that I have always tried to, in the fourteen years that I've been preparing the budget, try to, uh, be very conservative, both with revenues and expenses. And we tend to come in a little better, uh, than, than we projected. Last year, we came in significantly better than we projected, um, but that was basically for one-time payments, um.
Back pay from previous year that you over never got or didn't get.
So anything this year that you might.
Keep looking.
Okay.
We're looking, we're looking. Always looking. Um, but, uh, in any case, uh, for the general fund, uh, the fifty seven thousand dollars in the red is, it's not a terribly, terribly bad number that we can't, that can't deal with. Of course, if we had several years in a row where we, we finished in the red, we'd have to start really looking at where we were gonna start cutting costs. Um, I think I mentioned to a couple of you in offline discussions that this was kind of going through things and keeping the status quo as far as expenditures are concerned. If we said we wanted to start getting this to zero, we'd have to start talking about, are we gonna shut off the lights at some Mahfield certain nights? Are we going to, you know, furlough workers for a month or, you know, those are, those, those would be the options. There would be things that we don't normally do in order to cut, cut costs.
Maybe is this gonna be shared with staff?
Yes, yes. Uh, as part of the MOU negotiations, um, I, I will present them, uh, with, with where we fall with these things. So, um, I think that that's, you know, uh, that's kind of a, in the background, we've been discussing the, um, memorandum of understanding with our various bargaining groups. Um, and we, we've had to kind of push the discussion a little bit to find out where we fall. And so that's, I think they need to appreciate what, where you all are coming from when we respond to their requests. Um, so I'm just gonna just power through all of it here. Um, the water fund, uh, shows an eighty three thousand dollar negative. However, there's a couple of things, things with the water fund. We have, uh, one, um, uh, long-term debt obligation that is expiring this year. So that payment will no longer need to be made after this, this fiscal year. Um, and I believe that was seventy seven thousand, so that accounts for most of that, uh, most of that red ink there. Um, uh, there's also, uh, we, we put aside, we're putting aside money for, um, um, long-term maintenance, uh, which is not really an operational cost, but, um, we're accounting for that as, uh, for the profitability of the, of the enterprise. And so, um, that's not, that's basically taking the money out of one pocket and putting it into another. So it's not, uh, it's, it's not money out of the city. Um, uh, and of course, we could see that the water fund does, does, uh, perform better as we go forward. Um, I guess one of the things is I'll, I'll keep throwing it out there every year, uh, the water fund is, is a challenge every year. So we, we, we have not raised the rates, uh, in well over a decade, um, and, uh, really close to two decades. And so, um, with all of the costs that have gone up, especially if you look at labor, um, and inputs like chemicals, it's, it's a, it's a real, um, I guess testament to, uh, the staff to keep the costs down, um, and to the finance department over the years.
The wind blows in the valley, right?
As far as water's concerned, we, we're pretty much close to the lowest, yeah. Um, and I, I, I need to probably spiff up our, our, uh, our comparison chart. Um, I, I do that every, every year, the eighteen months or so, and haven't done it in a while, but we should check that. Um, I did ask the whole group at one point to, uh, kind of embark on the, the rate study that we need to do or find out what's gonna cost us to do a rate study. Do we ha, in order to raise the rates, we do have to do a rate study. Um, and that kind of fell through the cracks during the COVID times. So if it's, it's back to where we're gonna have to push that, push that from front to back and talk about it.
Ask a question.
Yes, sir.
We've replaced a lot of meetings, right?
Yes, um, I guess I should give a report on that. Um, uh, as you may recall, um, about ten years ago now, we embarked on, um, something to, well, back up one more step. The first week I started here, uh, the guy who was in charge of public works came in and said, gotta talk to you about meters and reading meters. And the system that we used to read water meters was failing at that point. And it was so obsolete, we couldn't get, we couldn't get the system fixed. Um, and we were kind of bubbling down the Band-Aids with, uh, you know, and bailing wire to keep it together. And just about the time that it was all gonna fail, Heber had the exact same system and they bought a new system, so they gave us all their old stuff. Um, and so that kind of saved us a little bit. Um, but as of last month, Sandra tells me, it's really on its last leg. So I, so what we had done at that point was, is kind of just before I ascended to city manager, I kind of pushed this off on a project to change the way we should read meters. Uh, most of the systems that we had looked at in the past were huge financial capital investment to start a new, to new deal. But we became aware of a program through Verizon, uh, teaming up with Metron Farnier, which is a meter, uh, company. And they basically have a system that does radio read, that basically sends a packet to the cells, through a cell signal. Um, and so we said, okay, let's adopt this. And the good thing about it was we could do it incrementally. We can do, we can do ten meters or we can do a hundred meters. Um, what we decided, so we tested it around the city for a couple of months at work, so we embarked on that. Um, Mike Goodso will probably remember and maybe even, uh, Pacheco has been around on that. We accelerated that. We used to spend about seventy five thousand dollars on meters and said, we need to get up to a hundred grand. So we moved from seventy five to a hundred grand. One year, this might have been about the time you started with us, Mr. Pacheco, but we, we actually even took money from the sewer fund because the sewer fund benefits from meter reading, um, to further accelerate that process. So I bring that all up to tell you that the lifespan of those meters is supposed to be ten years. We're in now, we're now in year ten, so some of those first-year meters are gonna start failing. We're only about seventy percent of the way through replacing all the meters in the city. So we're, we're working furiously to get everything replaced. Um, one of the things we've done is all the remote locations like the, the country club, we did that in the first year and a half. We got, and so they don't ever have to go to the country club unless the meter goes out. Um, and all the north, you know, kind of peripheral stuff, everything that's outside of the city limits, all on radio reads now. Um, but we just keep working with it, we keep working with it. And so, um, you know, that's, that's important that we keep that number where it is. Um, because the, the, the reading system now won't report to the computer. So what Sandra was doing is she's taking all the radio, radio reads and importing them manually. But now that we flipped over to fifty percent, I said, why are you doing that? Let's flip it and do the other one where you, cuz you can only import one system under our accounting system. So now she's gonna be to the point where she's doing, you know, doing the, the, the old system and, and we'll get the reads off there, but they're gonna have to put in manually. Um, and all of that is just, is to say that sometime in the next two or three years, we could have a kind of a catastrophic ending to some of the first, first couple of meters we did. And at that point, we're gonna have to talk because at that point, we're, we're still gonna be needing to replace old ones that are phasing out with all the ones that, that were failing from the original project, too. And, and, and bear in mind, it's like anything else, electronic or, or any mechanical thing. The projected life is ten years, but, but that's somewhat analogous to what the regular meters were. And we got twenty-year-old meters out there still that are still. Uh, you know, I used to know a lot better, but I think it's about five hundred bucks now. Because the meter itself is about two hundred and fifty, three hundred, between two fifty and three hundred. Do you know this or do you not know this? Between two, two fifty and three hundred and then the, the radio read thing is a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever, so.
I just know how much it's gonna total, I'm not.
Yeah, so I used to kind of know the incremental cost, but I think that's about right. And the other thing, too, is that that's for a three-quarter inch meter, but we're, we're placing a lot of one-inch meters. And then if there's a commercial meter, it's a two, it, they're two or three-inch meters. A three-inch meter is about thirty-five hundred bucks. The radio read thing's still the same, but the meter itself is, is, and so, like, when they shut down the Brentwood stuff over there, they replaced a bunch of meters at the, at the junior high over there because they weren't reading very well. But they were all two, they were two or three, two-inch meters. So I, I don't know, but those were probably twenty-five hundred bucks or something. So it varies a little bit. But of course, the vast majority of our stuff is, is residential and, 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 and so we're replacing those at five hundred bucks.
Screens for a rate increase with that stuff?
Screens for a rate thing. Because, because we're keeping this together really, uh, you know, and, and I, I would do, anything we do, I would do it in the way that we did it the last time. When I say it's been more than two decades since we did a rate increase, we last increased the rates in two thousand, I wanna say two thousand and four, but they phased it in over four years. So it was, so the rate increased in two thousand and eight, if I remember that correctly. It's somewhere in that. But it was the last increment that, that they did from the two thousand and four deal. So, um, you know, that's, and that's, you know, when we're talking about this thing with the IID rates, you know, one of the problems that IID has is they don't raise the rates at all. And then all of a sudden, they get to the point where they're like, oh, goodness, here we gotta go. And so instead of being one or two percent a year, it's eight percent all of a sudden in a single year. And so, anyway, we'll, we'll get to that point when we talk about this stuff a little more, but, but that's, that's your education on water meters there. Water. Um, sewer fund, again, uh, for those that don't recall or, or haven't heard before, um, when we last raised sewer rates, we did some projections based on, uh, some, uh, numbers that were gonna increase both personnel and electrical. And those never really materialized, so the rates that came in have kept sewer pretty flush over the years. So that's shown a hundred and sixty-five thousand. However, as you will recall, we just did two big projects, replaced membranes to the, um, uh, to the Bilac Basin, which is a couple hundred bu, a couple hundred thousand bucks. And we also, this year, will be doing the, the update to the UV system over there, which is two hundred and fifty thousand bucks. So, uh, we should be doing our transfer that we put in, uh, our, our eighty-five thousand dollar transfer in water. We should be doing that in sewer as well, and then that pays for those things, so. Um, so that'll be Chandler's, uh, Chandler's thing to handle there. Um, trash fund, uh, you know, I always tell people, when I started here, trash was in the red by a hundred grand. Uh, over the years, these little seven thousand dollar increments every year, we built our trash fund up to where we have positive money in the trash fund now. So that's a good thing. Um, trash retention funds, it's very difficult to project because it basically says, what projects are we gonna have? Like, our next project, which is to finish the, uh, West, West Ninth Street project to do that, that deal. What's the delta between what we're gonna get and what we're gonna, what we're gonna spend? Um, we're also gonna start on designing the pine sidewalk project for between fourth and fifth pine, we're doing sidewalks there. Um, and so those kind of things are just kind of hard to put in here, but we do, I do the best I can to kind of put those in there. Again, those are the kind of things where we're gonna bring them to you individually as we, as we hire out contractors and do those things. So the budget number's a good placeholder, but as those things happen, we can talk to them on a case-by-case basis. So that's kind of the broad overview. I, uh, you know, Chandler and I are here to ask and answer any questions. Uh, I think we've answered several questions throughout the day. I think, I don't know if, um, if Chandler got any email questions or anything, but, uh, if you have any questions tonight, we'd be glad to answer those as well.
We're taking questions tonight, Alvin Ash, that's it.
Where are you going?
You guys can email me when that's. I don't have any, I think I got my, most of mine answered already.
Good. All right, then we put it to the council. Do you have a motion to approve this topic? Motion for the council, Jack, what could you get a second?
One second.
Yeah, interesting, we'll call it.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodso?
Yes.
There was nothing in the information only question. Staff reports, is there anything you wanna highlight on your staff report to the?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of minor things, um, and I lost my other page here. Um. I'm sorry, what's that?
Oh, the budget.
Oh. Oh, thank you very much. Uh, I, I will say that, um, you know, when, when I came onto the city, uh, it was a little bit more of a mismatch, mismatch. And I've tried to really put it into a condensed version so that you guys can all read the numbers and get granular if you want to, you know, so. Um, I, the, the couple of things, uh, I didn't update it on here, but the Ninth Street project, I indicated that we were waiting on a stat, uh, IID bill to proceed with the final billing on the undergrounding portion. I have received that bill now. Um, I'm gonna work with Erica at the whole group to get the, uh, all those funds recouped for the city. Um, and that'll be the first thing on my list tomorrow. Um, uh, I also, um, we received the audit. I put that on there last time, we had just received it. Um, uh, we were so immersed in the budget, I wasn't really able to respond to it, but I started responding to it this morning. I expect that I'll be done with that tomorrow and we'll have the audit fully put to bed here this week. Um, uh, then the last thing, uh, I've indicated, I don't, I don't have it for you, but I indicated that it'd be, that the process with the architecture plans for, uh, the public safety building that was gonna be iterative between the architect and the plan check firm. The plan check firm got it done in two weeks and that was a month ago. The architect's still sitting on the plans and he, or the, his, his responses to the plans. And he sent me an email today that says he expects to submit, resubmit by July seventh. Um, so he's kind of been a little bit slow and he's a little bit, he's slowing down this part of the process, too. But, uh, he had, did have some questions and all, so we'll see if he can kind of, um, kind of try to answer some of those things. Uh, might be some finance stuff in there, there, too. Um, that's, that's the only thing. And then, Mr. Pacheco, I don't know if you have any insight into this, but, uh, we did apply for a, the Globe grant for IID. And I was kind of led to believe, ah, it's just a one-page deal, just pull it out or whatever. But when they sent me back, it was like, oh, no, you need, uh, calculations about how much money you're gonna save.
Yeah, they wanted a bunch of stuff.
A licensed contractor to do a bunch of stuff. And I was like, huh, well, that was what I was led to believe. But anyway, I, do you know if that's gonna be, that grant was a one-time only or do they do it kind of periodically or?
I'll check, but that's where, that's why I emailed you guys, cuz I have to reset any, too.
Yeah.
Or didn't complete the application.
It was not very, like, informative on the instruction. They literally just kind of used one sheeter and then, like, there wasn't really a lot of, I don't know, there wasn't really anything to follow.
But I, I will test to see if you're gonna have any, or you, I'll let you know.
And I'm, we know, Rob knows well, right? Okay. Yeah, we got, we got the rejection letter, so.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But, like, I was, I was incredibly busy. That was the end, end, end of the audit deal.
We submitted both of them the last hour, that they were available.
So I just basically turned it to, to Chandler to do and I didn't really even look at it too much, I just signed the thing, you know, so.
Yeah, and I spent an hour on both of them instead of paying our computer, we were done at the last minute, so.
Anyway, okay, that's it.
I have a question about the wet. Just saw a bit of work open there.
We're been our guys, I think, then. Um, I did, I sent Chavez out there and said, hey, you know, let's not let the wet weeds get too crazy. But I also, Steve Charlton was talking about doing some stuff as well. So, well, he's the IID, the IID guy, he kind of oversees all the wetting stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you know, you know what that could also been to? The guys that built the wetlands asked if they could steal some dirt and I told them they could. But that was, it was a while ago, but I don't care. You got a lot of dirt there. I'm going to rename that dirt hill like Mount Nick. It didn't exist before.
We've got a couple more staff reports if anybody has any questions about.
Our next meeting should be July 28th.
We're not meeting the 14th.
Okay.
Now I go nurse my beautiful wife back to home.